All right, well, let's see, I may get the right. Here we go. Clackamas County Water and Environmental Services. Having back before us, I guess you guys haven't been here together, have you?
We have not. It's been a while since I've been here.
Yeah. Greg Geist, the West Director, and Chris Story, Attorney.
And Mayor, before we actually start with Greg, I did just want to say this is a new format for the city, for me. So, the goal of tonight really is for all of you to engage at any point throughout the presentation. This is a dialogue throughout the night. They have lots of slides, but we can interrupt those slides whenever you want to, to have a discussion about that specific issue. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I was also going to issue a reminder to speak into the microphone if you are speaking.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you, Councilors and Mayor.
My name's Greg Geist. I'm the Director of Water and Environment Services. We are a department in Clackamas County. With me tonight is Chris Story. He's the West Assistant Director. And Lynne Chacon is on her way from City Hall and will be joining us shortly. And she's our Capital Program Manager, essentially the head of our Engineering Department. So, I wanted to just kind of start with the basics, because I know we have some new faces, and I don't know how much folks know about West. So, well, actually, there is one piece of business that I was going to bring up initially, and that is our West Advisory Committee. Per our agreement with the city, there's an elected or appointed representative that is slated for that advisory committee slot. We brought that up with the advisory committee last time we met in March. The next meeting is in May 23rd, and so it would be lovely if the city could let me know who they would like to be seated, because that will be our budget meeting for the year.
Okay.
All right. There you are. And Lynne's here. So, just a little bit about West. We are focused on public health, the environment, and clean water, basically. Healthy waterways, safe communities, healthy economy. We clean billions and billions in gallons, six to seven billion gallons a year of what goes down your toilets, winds up at our facility. We treat it. We make clean water out of that. We make energy, and we make a fertilizer product called biosolids that's used in the agricultural industry. Our surface water program, we plant trees, we restore habitat, we put in place rules and regulations so that development, when it comes in, has water quality treatment. And we retrofit those areas that have been developed earlier and need water quality treatment to protect rivers and streams. And most importantly, I think, though, in light of what we're going to be talking about tonight, is we've really been focused, since I became the Director, and especially the last two years, on public outreach and engagement. As anybody knows that's around the public works sector, we are out of sight and out of mind, and have been for decades. People flush their toilet, and it works. And as I'm going to show you in a few minutes, it's expensive, and the federal government is not paying for this infrastructure anymore. And so, one of our big initiatives is to reach out and form partnerships, collaboration, and public education and outreach, so that people understand the work that we do and are willing, frankly, to pay for it.
Historically, what was the percentage that the federal government had been paying?
I have a slide for that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Go ahead. This is the area that we serve. We don't see political boundaries. We see rate zones, and that's on purpose. What was I going to say? We serve about 165,000, give or take, people everywhere from Happy Valley down to Milwaukee, down to Westland, Oregon City, Gladstone, Johnson City. And, yeah, that's what we do. About 18 months ago, we formed what we call the West One-Night partnership, which essentially took three service areas, three different districts, and essentially brought them under one financial and management umbrella. That was a big deal for us. What it does is allows us to not only develop, but execute long-term capital planning and projects. Prior to that, every kind of arrangement, and there's been many, many over the years, cooperation between the two districts, and even pumping sewage from one district to another, and building facilities from one district to another. Those were all one-off agreements and not, in my mind, sustainable, when we need to have a 20-year capital plan, and we're building infrastructure that lasts 50 to 100 years. So, that was a big deal. One of the outgrowths of that, happily, since we are in the position of having to fund all of the work based on rates, essentially, we achieved a triple-A bond rating through that process. Go ahead, Chris. So, how is West funded? Almost entirely by retail and wholesale sewer rates. When we say wholesale sewer rates, that is, like for Milwaukee, where Milwaukee provides the retail, that is the collection system, the conveyance system, to get to our treatment works. We charge a wholesale rate for the treatment of that sewage. Where we provide those services and own that infrastructure, pipes, pump stations, we charge an additional, about $12 a month for our retail.
So, am I misremembering that Gladstone was, at least until pretty recently, handling their own pipes?
They do. They own and operate their pipes.
They own and operate, don't they? So, they are also wholesale customers?
They are.
I thought that everybody else was retail besides us.
No. No. Gladstone, Oregon City, and Westland all are wholesale customers.
Okay.
I will say that, and I'm tooting our horn a little bit, where we provide retail service that is taking care of the pipes and pump stations, we charge about $12 a month. Oregon City's over $30 a month. Westland's right behind them, and Gladstone is about to take, is going to be approaching that soon, because they've...
They haven't been doing anything for years.
They haven't been doing anything, yeah. So, they're facing some pretty steep rate increases. The reason we can do that is because we have relatively newer infrastructure, especially compared to Oregon City, but also we're an economy-scale business, so we're much, much larger than they are.
So, then what is the difference between what our relationship with you is and, say, Oregon City's?
Well, you are, you're not a member of the district. You are what we would call a wholesale customer. That's why we have...
A wholesale what? I can't hear you, Greg. I'm sorry.
So, you may note on the slide, we have Zone 2 and Zone 2A.
Right.
And you may recognize some of the boundaries of Zone 2A. What we tried to reflect there is the conversation of where we serve, is the city of Milwaukee is a contract customer. We have a contract that agrees to serve you, but you are not annexed within our boundaries, right? Because the service districts are jurisdictional boundaries that otherwise draw where and whom we serve. And Johnson City is the same. So, you're both contract customers. The contract that we have will be covering later, but it's a very similar relationship for both.
So, if we were in the district, if we annexed to the district, but remained, had the retail relationship where we maintain our own pipes, then we would be the same as Oregon City, Gladstone, Westland?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, wrong way.
Yeah, that's, I think that's... So, did you want to talk about...
I thought I already said...
Oh, did I not talk about that? Oh, yeah. We're almost exclusively funded through rates. System development charges, that is, new development that's happening, accounts for about 16%, and then other minor sources. But, as I mentioned initially, it's almost entirely rate-based funding.
Can I make one observation?
Oh, right.
Under our agreement with the city of Milwaukee, jurisdictionally, we can't charge an SDC, because you're not within our boundaries. But, it seems inappropriate for people to add on to the demands of the system without them paying. So, our contract actually sets up the requirement for the city to make a charge, a service charge or a connection charge, that is the same price as our SDC, and then it's conveyed over when new connections happen. So, that is still there, contractually, even though we can't do it statutorily.
Are you going to be talking about SDCs more later?
I didn't plan on it, but we can. We're actually in the process now. We have a five-year capital improvement plan that we got approved by our Board of County Commissioners. We did have a conversation at the March Advisory Committee meeting about SDCs, and we're going to be asking for a recommendation from the advisory committee in May.
Is there any consideration right now for SDCs to be tiered or graded based on impacts that, so, a 4,000-square-foot house compared to a 400-square-foot house?
Right. So, not the SDC itself, but what we would... So, SDCs are based on equivalent dwelling units. So, if you're a Fred Meyer Bakery coming in, you could have hundreds of EDUs that we would charge.
Right.
If, we are revising our rules right now, and will be for the next probably six to nine months, we're going through a public process and have a contractor, where we're looking at what constitutes an equivalent dwelling unit. And there's all kinds of different ways to, you can do that by fixture count, you can do that by water main size, there's lots of different ways to do that. And I'm certainly interested in exploring a gradation from an ADU or a tiny home to, you know, six-bath, six-bedroom home. Right now, we do have some ability to tweak EDUs. If it's an apartment unit for something, it's point, we consider it point eight, but our rules are decades old, and they need to be updated to us the current kind of landscape.
So, isn't it kind of backwards to be doing the SDC work before you finish that?
Well, we're doing, the vast majority of our SDCs that come in are residential, single-family units. So, when we're talking about tweaking our rules and regulations that could result in changes to EDUs, unless, we're, I think it's about 85% of our SDC revenue is just standard single-family homes. We don't expect that to change a whole lot. Where we're kind of nipping around the edges is, for example, warehousing. So, compared to our peers, we have a very different formula for developing a warehouse count for EDUs, and frankly, we're not very competitive. And so, that's certainly somewhere we're going to look, and that we would take a hit there, from a revenue standpoint. So, we're, it's going to be revenue-neutral, but I don't think, we're kind of doing them hand-in-hand. It's a bit of a chicken-and-egg thing, but we're mindful of what the impacts are. And even if we make, you know, if we decide to vary or make gradations within a single-family home, from an ADU or a tiny home to a, frankly, McMansion, it would be, we would do it in a way that would be revenue-neutral.
So, and you would just, you would still just use it on, you would say, let's say, a two-bedroom, two-bath is one EDU, just for example. And a six-bedroom, six-bath is a...
One and a half or something.
One and a half or two EDU, and then, you know, a tiny home with one bathroom and one sink is a half an EDU, or something like that.
Right. That's the concept.
That's kind of where you're headed?
Yes.
Okay.
Lynne, as part of developing her capital improvement plan, evaluated the assets that we anticipate constructing, and then we compared that against a population, demographic population estimation that we had about what we're going to need to serve over the x number of years, and a portion of the capital projects, based on whether it was growth-related or asset replacement or regulatorily driven. So, only the portion that's related to growth is eligible for SDCs. And then, within that, we basically have a capacity allocation, say, this is going to serve x amount of units. And then, what Greg is talking about is, when we rewrite the rules, we can reallocate those units that we anticipate to show up, betwixt the types of, you know, services or customers that show up, but the net is likely to end up being the same.
So, how are you figuring infill?
Do you have... I'm sorry, how do we...
How are you figuring, so, we're built-out, built-out city, right? But, as a built-out city, we have roughly 1,000 units of housing that are either in planning stages, or permitting, or under construction right now.
Right. And so, we don't consider you built-out. When we did our, well, there was both, a few years ago, we had PSU do a population forecast, and then more recently, we had ECO Northwest. They were remarkably similar, different methodologies, but very similar results. And when we did some master planning work in 2011, I think, Lynne probably knows the number, but we assumed that Milwaukee, I think it was maybe 1,700 additional EDUs at build-out, but that could change. I mean, that was just our forecast, looking at population forecast and land use.
I would say that's probably...
Existing zoning.
Existing zoning, right.
Yeah. Yeah. And we're, you probably know, we're doing our comp plan right now.
Yeah.
Well, even under existing zoning, I think, Denny's figure was 2,900 units, so...
Yeah. 4,000 sticks is in my mind. You and I had a conversation. I sent you some numbers.
We've been talking about numbers in that range, but the buildable lands capacity right now is about 2,900, and the metro forecast is more in line with what you guys found with your studies.
Mm-hmm.
So, we've, but, as the mayor mentioned, we've got over 1,000 units sort of in the planning pipeline right now, so it kind of blows those forecasts out.
I will say, so, we, in the course of conversations with our cities around the capacity issue that we're actually building, constructing right now, we had conversations about who's growing and how much, and what the forecasts were. And I will say two things. One, the numbers that we came up with were vetted and consistent with their own, with the city's own transportation number, planning numbers, and none of the cities agreed that that's how they were going to grow or not grow. So, nobody thinks that it's right. Some don't want to grow, some think they're going to grow more, but nobody agrees. But, I think, we think district-wide, it's probably pretty accurate.
Okay.
So, to answer your question on federal dollars, it was 63% in 1977?
That's kind of what I was remembering, was in the 60% range, yeah. My dad was building, so his treatment plants in 1977.
Oh, yeah. It was a good time to be in the business, I'll tell you that. Yeah. Chris and I were in Washington DC last week for Water Week, and there's an annual water policy fly-in that we participate as an industry. We partnered up with Clean Water Services here in Oregon, and there was reps from Washington, Oregon, across the country. And so, we visited our congressional and senate delegates and delivered a message and a request to increase what they called a state revolving fund loan program. And I was also making a pitch for increasing the grant portion of that. Not necessarily that we would benefit from it, but there's a lot of small communities in Oregon. So, from the time that we built our plant in 1986 in the Tri-City facility, and I don't know the numbers for Kellogg, but I'm sure there are probably more...
It pre-877, doesn't it?
This, Kellogg came online in '74.
But it did receive federal grant. It was just under 75% federally funded.
Yeah. Right. And the, what, the example I was going to use, though, is the Tri-City facility is built in 1986. The growth, it's, we've experienced a doubling in growth in the area that that facility serves since then. So, what that means for us is, we're pretty healthy. We have a large rate base to spread these costs on. There's a lot of communities in Oregon, smaller communities, that are the same size they were in 1977, when they got this federal, and their stuff's worn out. So, at the federal level, we're really pushing, not only for increases to the state revolving fund, which happily, they have been doing the last couple of years, but also a portion for grant funding for smaller communities. Go ahead.
Did I need to visit the Oshawa?
Trying to kill this thing.
So, hopefully, you all know about the Kellogg Good Neighbor Agreement. It was part of that 2012 agreement between West and the city, and I just wanted to toot its horn a little bit. It's, well, some of the facts around it. 25-year term with extensions, so it's essentially a permanent agreement between the city and West. One of the parts of that agreement is that Kellogg will not expand beyond its original design capacity. Part of the work that we're doing there now, I believe that the original peak design capacity was 25,000, or 25 million gallons per day as a peak flow. Because of some work that was done in, I think, the 80s, that's been reduced to 22 million. And so, part of the work that we're doing there is to restore that 3 million of peak wet weather flow. Whether that, sorry, go ahead.
Well, so, it was based on capacity rather than, say, footprint or something like that, that people would care about?
Right, yeah. I think, yeah. I would love to revisit that. I mean, I don't think that we have a need in the immediate term, but the city's position on capacity, and increasing capacity at Kellogg, because it may well be necessary in the future, and it may not require a physical expansion of the footprint.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of the new technologies are actually smaller footprints.
Mm-hmm. It can be.
I'll ask this later. Go ahead.
So, anyway, everything from Milwaukee Bay Park to Ballard, or Ballard, Ballard Lighting along the pathway, I think we repaved the pathway, we did lots of landscaping around the plant, so I think it's been very successful. I used to sit on that committee, now it's our Operations Manager, Greg Ierly, and that's where I first met Karen Power. She was with the Neighborhood Association.
That's where we first met as well.
Yeah. Yes. Yes, it was. You sat behind me. I remember that. Asked hard questions, too.
So, I know that, I'm guessing that we're going to talk about the construction and improvements at Kellogg at some point in your presentation, but I just wanted to inquire about, and you've already heard me ask this question, but I'll keep asking it, what sort of plans you have in the future for energy efficiency improvements there? I know that's been a priority, to at least get SEM implemented at the Tri-Cities plant, but we are interested in that in Kellogg as well.
And I'll let Lynne expound on that, but yes, as soon as we're done with construction, we're going to start the, SEM is Strategic Energy Management. It's a program through the Energy Trust of Oregon that we've employed very successfully at our Tri-City facility. We're over 4 million kilowatt-hours of energy saved since implementing that program. It's just such chaos right now at Kellogg that we're going to wait until that gets done. That said, you know, virtually any time that we upgrade a pump or piece of equipment, it's much more energy-efficient.
Right. I have a slide on that, so if you want to wait, sure. Okay.
I have questions about that, too.
A couple of other things about the Good Neighbor, or the agreement that resulted in the Good Neighbor Committee, that I don't know that folks know as much about, but it's going to, it's going to be potentially important moving forward when we talk about partnering around inflow and infiltration and peak wet weather flows. That's going to be something, that's our next big deal. We've got treatment capacity in different ways, but that peak wet weather, that's, you know, Thanksgiving, when everybody's in town, and everybody's at your house, and you have to be able to process all that water. So, and that's going to involve working in the collection system and together, rather than us just building, you building bigger pipes and us building bigger equipment, we really need to go after it at its source. And to that, to that, there is a portion of the agreement from 2012 that says that West will pay for 10% of all INI projects that the city chooses to embark on. So, that's not something that the city has taken us up on since 2012, and I know that the city right now is going through their, and doing a collection system master plan. And so, I assume that once the system is modeled and understood, and there will be some opportunities to work together to fix it. 10%. Non-negotiable.
No, that's okay. I didn't know. I just got 10% and left.
Could you unpack what INI is?
Inflow and infiltration.
Okay.
Yeah. So, basically, either rainwater that gets into cracks, or groundwater that comes up and gets into your cracks.
Or direct connections.
Or, yeah, or it can be a catch. Downspouts, even, you know, in Gladstone, they have a big problem with street catchbasins that are connected to their...
Yeah, well, we discovered when we were redoing the pipe down Harrison, that one of the springs that comes off of Walder School was actually being piped directly into the syrup pipe.
Yeah.
So, we changed that to the storm system.
Thank you.
Who knows? Old stuff.
Yeah. So, and then the last thing on the Good Neighbor is, that is, the way that that's funded, it's, it's kind of a funky calculation, but it's a dollar per EDU per month. So, it works out that Milwaukee has approximately 11,000 equivalent dwelling units within the city, and so, we basically write Milwaukee a check on, every month for $11,000. $132,000 a year, I think, is what's funding that.
And so, that money is coming directly from West? It's not a surcharge that's specific to...
Yeah. It's a surcharge.
Well, no.
Milwaukee residents.
No, no. So, we don't, we don't charge Milwaukee. It's basically, the entire district pays for it.
Okay. That's the district.
It all goes into one pot.
It's just that the payment is based on population, rather than...
Yes. Which, you know, it's kind of the inflationary. I think it was intended to account for, you know, future growth and inflation and whatnot. Yeah.
So, I, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understood you correctly. So, it's based on the number of EDUs in the city of Milwaukee?
Yes.
But it's, but you said it's about $11,000 a month, which would be equivalent of that, but you said it was paid district-wide.
Right. Well...
I thought that's what you said.
I did. What, I always have a hard time explaining this. I don't know why. Some people think that it's a surcharge for Milwaukee residents, that they pay a dollar a month, and then we remit that to the city, but that's not it. The collective rates that we receive, that collective pot of money, we just take a portion of that and give it to Milwaukee. So, in a sense, Milwaukee ratepayers are paying for it.
But they're not paying a dollar.
They're not. No, no, no.
So, they might be paying cents on the dollar, while other areas are also paying cents on the dollar.
Exactly. Everybody, yes.
So, that $11,000 is from the district, the entirety of the district?
Entirety of the district, yes.
So, in a sense, really, what's the relationship to the fact that we have 11,000 EDUs? Is that, I mean, whatever amount that is, you just figure that, how many EDUs we have, we get a dollar per back?
You know, again, Chris may, Chris was actually involved in, at the time, he was West's counsel, and was involved in that, the development of that agreement. I don't know. My sense is that it was, it resulted in a reasonable amount of money, and there was a kind of an adder, so as the city grows and moving through time, it would, it would increase along with that. But it's kind of a price of tea in China kind of thing to me.
That's right. Would you say it was a negotiated number? We were looking for basically a proxy, rather than saying it's a, you know, 100,000 a year, but then you have an inflationary adjustment, and what's the inflator, and blah, blah, blah. Well, doesn't it make sense? Basically, this was a recognition that there's an impact on the community from hosting a treatment plan, and that others that benefit from that should be contributing back to that community.
Yeah.
So, and frankly, then we got into a discussion of, well, should it be reflected of just the value or impact on downtown or Island Station, and what about, you know, the people that live in sort of the interior portions of Milwaukee out towards 205, they're, you know, not that much different from somewhere in the unincorporated area, they don't really see it or be impacted by it. And we, but we thought really, it's the community of the city that was being impacted, and so the reflection of value back should reflect the entirety of that community. And so, that's how that idea of a proxy evaluation came about. And plus, it recognized that if you're adding 1,000 units, that number goes up. And so, as there are more people in the community that are impacted, because they're part of your community, that's reflected. And I will also note, what used to be that cost spread across the district is now that cost spread across West. Because we, that component or cost is built into our wholesale treatment rate, that everybody that accesses our treatment plant pays.
Uh-huh.
So, now that West is one system, the wholesale rate that we're charging in Oregon City, or Gladstone, or Westland also contributes towards that component of support.
So, take Gladstone and Happy Valley. Gladstone's not growing much, so the people are paying basically the same surcharge or additional, or the same amount is being taken from each of their bills to go towards this 11,000. But in Happy Valley, it becomes less and less for each one, because they have a higher, they have far higher numbers of EDUs that are contributing to that. Would that be correct?
It's a net revenue requirement, because we don't operate at a profit, so, but when we calculate the number per year, it's a per-year calculation across the entirety of people participating. So, the growth in Happy Valley decreases the allocation on the folks in Gladstone just as much as it does in Happy Valley.
Okay.
Yeah.
And equally for the folks in Milwaukee as well.
And I would add, so, we're in the process of potentially developing a Good Neighbor Fund for our Tri-City facility, and that, we're working with Gladstone and Oregon City on that, using a similar model. But I will say, one of the things that we're doing differently is, we're, we've expanded the boundary that, where those funds can be used. For the Kellogg facility, I think it's 200 feet from the fence line is the geographic extent for where those funds can be dedicated. And what we found in talking with Gladstone and Oregon City is that there's a geographic area, and especially when you're talking in that area about connectivity and trails when you're talking in that area about connectivity and trails and, and other amenities, that, you know, we were comfortable expanding that, that geographic boundary. So, if that's something that the city was, would be interested in doing, I'd be happy to have that conversation.
Because then it could include more parks.
Peter reports that it's 200 yards, not 200 feet.
Really? Okay.
Okay.
That sounds, that sounds more right.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Thinking about where we invest in the very first.
100 feet is much smaller.
So, for the Tri-City facility, I don't, I don't know if y'all know where it is, but it's right on the Clackamas River, near, just upstream of the new Cove development off of 205. And that geographic area runs all the way down to Meldrum Bar, along the Willamette and, and back around through Oregon City.
That's half a mile, almost, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, you know, it's kind of the, the river corridor in that area. Because there's a lot of plans for, you know, interpretive work and trails and connectivity and other things. So, anyway. Take it away. I think this is yours, Chris. Yes. So, we thought it might be useful just to give a very quick summary of the past, present, and future of the relationship with West, just to make sure we are all on the same page, because it goes back quite a ways. Greg was referencing the construction of Kellogg in the 70s. That was a joint grant application between the city and CCSD Number One, which was formed at that same time for very much the purpose of constructing the Kellogg plant, and then serving the unincorporated area, and at the time, Happy Valley, which had around 1,200 people. And for reasons that are not clear, the city, which could have been part of the service district, did not annex into the service district, but just basically agreed to partner with the service district for that. The site, or so I am told, and I imagine some people here know better than I, used to be a gravel pit. And then the plant was constructed, and at the time, again reportedly, was considered a dramatic improvement on the waterfront.
Somewhere along there had been a, had been a brick yard at one point. I hadn't heard gravel pit before, but.
So, there was, I suspect perceptions changed over time. So, the, the plant was constructed, additional capacity was constructed, solids handling digestors were added later.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, the, the initial construction was just primary treatment, and then secondary, and then solids handling was added. By the time you hit about 1980, the plant is sort of close to what you would know now.
What does that mean? What was happening to the solids before solids handling was at? They were going into the river?
No, I'm sure not.
No, I, I think they just, they had a sort of a very primitive form of treatment there that they were sort of limping along with, and we got more sophisticated over time.
Not after 1972.
Right. Yeah, the Clean, the Clean Water Act was the trigger. It not only gave us the guidelines for what was being discharged, but also was the motivator for the federal investments in communities to improve their water quality. And that is what happened. There was an agreement between CCSD One and the city of Milwaukee regarding use, maintenance, care, contributions for capital, and that agreement ran through 1986. And the parties worked together. If there was an investment that needed to be made, for example, the construction of solids handling, it was a one-time charge to the city. And, you know, we say this is a $10 million project, and then they actually just looked at the amount of flow coming from the city into the treatment plant, derived a percentage, and said, your percentage is this, and it's due right now, which was uncomfortable for the city. So, typically, CCSD One ended up loaning the city the money to then pay back CCSD One, and then it was sort of repaid over time. So, it was, it was sort of, the agreement itself was just a very few pages, which is, you know, hard to believe in this day and age. And you ended up with a sort of a one-off feel to the conversation. The agreement expired in 1986, and I don't think anyone noticed, because the conversations around what to do with it never went anywhere, and the agreement sort of became the sort of continued operational basis well into the 2000s.
And so, my recollection from about 2010, from analysis that the Milwaukee staff at that era did, is that during the, under those historical agreements, Milwaukee paid for 40%. That was sort of the, the understood portion of the plant that Milwaukee was paying for. So, when, when they did those one-off things, Milwaukee paid 40%, and CCSD One paid 60%. And so, we've never used 40%.
Right. The, the original agreement talked of a 60-40 split at the time of construction. That was part of the grant agreement to the feds, but that wasn't how the capital costs were split out after initial construction. It was based on actual flows. I think the city of Milwaukee was at its peak, a little under 25% of use of the plant, and it wasn't growing, certainly not as fast as it is right now at the time. And as growth occurred in the unincorporated area or up in Happy Valley, its percentage shrunk, so the per-unit contributions shrunk over time. But the, the big question became, I think the city eventually became unhappy with having a treatment plant there. There was an adoption of, or a request that the plant go away. There was an attempt to do that, where the, there was talk of consolidating all treatment at the Tri-City plant. There was an agreement that the county commissioners had actually moved forward with, but then there was a citizen lawsuit from the unincorporated area that objected to that and led to the project being paused. And that led to, what's the alternative? Multiple studies were looked at, but recognizing the desire of the city to not expand Kellogg, the idea then became we would divert away from Kellogg and not expand there, and expand at the Tri-City plant, which is what eventually happened. You saw expansions starting, the construction started in 2008, finished, and ended in 2011, and you saw some connections being made. And that led to the 2011 service agreement. Its term is linked to the cost of the capital for construction of those facilities. And so, now, rather than Kellogg being the host for all of CCSD One flows, it is shared between the two treatment plants.
That's me. So, following up on Chris and Greg, and Greg's mention of being one district now instead of two, and, and looking towards the future, we, the fact that we are one district is going to open up all sorts of exciting opportunities for us, maybe around permitting, where we can share loads between the two treatment plants, for example. And so, we're going to be embarking on, we're doing consultant selection now on what I call the Willamette Facilities Plan. It's a plan looking at both Kellogg and Tri-Cities, how the plants operate together in both dry and wet weather, what are our future needs? Usually, you look 20 years out when you do a facilities plan. You come up with what your needs are, then you prioritize and schedule those needs for expansion over 20 years. Well, I expect that process to take one and a half, two years, and we'll be talking to you and informing you as we go along with that process. So, that is for our two major treatment plants. We just finished the same process for our collection system, similar to what you're doing, and your collection system master plan is a multi-year process, and we just wrapped up in January with our master plan, and it, so, we now have a 20-year schedule in our collection system of where and how much we need to invest money to address capacity issues, condition issues, and INI, and I'll talk about INI in a little bit in more depth. I do want to mention just an education point on capacity at Kellogg, that we look at both dry weather and wet weather capacity. Wet weather capacity is purely flow-driven, and the capacity is 25 MGD. It's physically, how much water can you get through that plant, right? Treatment is very minimal in wet weather, because it's mostly rain. Dry weather capacity, on the other hand, like Thanksgiving, is not a wet weather problem. It's a dry weather problem, even though it's raining most of the time at Thanksgiving. And that is biological load, and that is a population-based capacity. So, each, a plant is rated, based, you'll have a capacity for a plant, but you need to know what basis that is when you're talking about capacity of a plant. I don't have a firm handle, other than what was done in 2012 on the dry weather capacity of Kellogg. We will be addressing that in the next six months or so.
Do you have some concept of what the differential is between typical dry weather load and typical more heavy rain load?
Our, our peak wet weather load to Kellogg, our peak wet weather flow is 25, but of course, that's capped. If everything came down, that it would be higher than that, but we divert a bunch of it. And our dry weather flows, I want to say, are in the five to eight range.
So, we're literally picking up five, four times as much, or actually more, because you're diverting some.
Yes.
Yes, Tri-City, Tri-City is over eight times.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
It's not unusual.
And so, I'll be talking about INI in a little bit.
Yeah.
And do you have a sense of how, how is that interacting with our hotter, drier summers and longer drought periods? Does that impact biological load?
You know, it doesn't impact the pounds, which is the capacity. You have to treat pounds, so you basically require so much oxygen per pound of biological load. So, doesn't impact that, but what we are seeing is basically due to conservation and low-flow toilets and showerheads, that it's more concentrated. So, our flows are lower, but the load is the same.
Okay. And how does the, is the plant currently constructed in a way to accommodate that change, or is that something that you need to look at for the 20-year plan out?
That's not something that makes any difference in the design of a plant. Okay?
So, in the last, when you talk about high water flows and diverting more to Tri-City, so in the last week, when we've had high rains, you actually changed how much you were diverting to?
You know, I don't know that, because I haven't talked about, I didn't talk to anybody. I was out just there this morning about how much they pumped. I did, was told that the flow to Kellogg was 16 MGD, million gallons a day yesterday.
Right. I thought, I'm pretty sure that Craig said that they were running the inner tie full-tilt. The, the target during a wet weather event at Kellogg, I think, is either 15 or 16.
Yeah.
So, we managed, where we can, to the extent that we can, we manage the flow upstream at the inner tie, which Lynn will show you where it is.
Yep.
To, to keep the flows at Kellogg from exceeding that peak wet weather, with a margin of safety.
So, a lot of that's coming from the unincorporated area on Happy Valley?
Well, I, the, the peak, we can only pump 10 MGD, and that's running.
From the inner tie.
From the inner tie, across. We're going to be adding capacity to that as, as needed. But, so I wouldn't say the majority of the flow, no. The majority of the flow comes in below there.
It is.
Yes.
So, quickly, I'll address what's the work we're doing in your front yard at Kellogg. We are about 60% complete on construction. We'll finish in 2020, hopefully early 2020. We'll see what we can do. Cost is 18 million. We are, as Greg mentioned, always, all of our new equipment is high-efficiency equipment. But interestingly, some of our sludge pumping, the way the plant was originally designed, for example, we had one set of our sludge pumps were 25 horsepower. They only need to be five, so we cut that way back. And then, I think I mentioned, at the advisory committee, we installed new blowers, which are much more efficient. So, we're working on it. And in the future, when we do a solids upgrade project, we'll be replacing our Cogen, our engine, which will produce more power there at the plant, using methane from the digestors and heat some buildings with that.
So, that, that 18 million and that project finishing next year, does that include the de-watering stuff?
No.
No.
That's next.
Coming up.
Just as an example, and I don't know what we're going to, or, the, the Tri-City facility, when we, as we're upgrading that facility and adding digester capacity, which is where we get our methane, we're moving from a 250-kilowatt generator to a 600, with kind of what Lynn likes to call a wide spot in the line. It's a membrane bladder that fills with gas that allows us to run that engine more and more efficiently, so it's not starting and stopping, that we have a nice, nice cushion.
Just like a water tower on a water system, it just floats and fills in the peaks and valleys a little bit.
I thought Cogen created electricity.
It does.
So, you talked about heating the buildings with it.
Right. So, the engine provides power, 600 kilowatts at Tri-City, but you can recover heat. And in fact, when you hear an efficiency number for an engine, it includes a heat recovery.
Okay.
From the exhaust stack, from the lube oil, and from the jacket water. And I have a slide on that at Tri-City.
So, it's doing both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the part I missed.
Yep. Next slide. So, we've been briefly discussing the inner tie connection, and this is really the crux of, you know, both our past and our future. I think the first inner tie, and Chris can correct me on dates if I'm wrong, was constructed in, it comes from nowhere.
Yeah.
Was constructed.
This is quite, make it all the way up.
In the 90s, and I honestly don't know the capacity of that inner tie.
I think it's, it's about two.
Two or three?
Yeah, two.
MGD.
And it was, it was constructed because when there was discussion about decommissioning Kellogg and shifting all the flows, there was a capacity issue at the Kellogg plant in the late 90s already. So, about when it was constructed in the 70s, it, it provided 30 years of capacity before it sort of reached its design limits. At that point, it was around both dry and wet weather. And in lieu of investing at that plant, since the idea was to eventually decommission it, we constructed the pipeline to divert some of that flow down to the Tri-City plant. But the districts were separate, and it became a rental agreement from CCSD One renting capacity from the Tri-City Service District to utilize that treatment plant until a final deal is reached. Back to Greg's one-off deal challenge, you know, you make these investments to try and, you know, manage the system in the most cost-effective way, but there was difficulty in saying what the long-term strategy was going to be, because each question became a larger dialogue that, you know, had to be addressed uniquely.
Chris?
Oh, sorry.
Just real quick, so that, that inner tie actually should go up. Essentially, it's the Clackamas industrial area that it peels flow off of. And again, at the time, it was to, it was to protect Kellogg. And even though, yeah, and it was, if the same situation were today, it would probably be, still be the right answer. It was the cheapest way to, and there was excess capacity at Tri-City, and so, it was, it was, it was the right answer at the time.
So, we've talked about two types of weather that impacts. We've talked about how on the dry weather side, you're looking at 5,000 to 8,000 EDU. How much is current, how much current capacity is taking up with the dry weather EDUs here in Milwaukee?
It's five to, five to eight million gallons a day.
Okay. And how much room is there? There's 25? No, how many million gallons can it handle?
25 million gallons.
Hydraulically, it can pass 25 without backing up onto the streets. 25 MGD. That doesn't mean it's giving the level of biological treatment. It still has the same affluent permit and requirements.
Yep.
But it cannot treat 25 MGD like it, how do I explain that?
So, if we.
The biological capacity is less than that, and I don't know what that number is.
Right.
That's really helpful, thank you.
That's what we call dry weather flow, and that is truly dependent on the number of how, that's just what's, no infiltration is purely a function of population and volume and strength. But, and so, the calculus, the, the analysis that was done back in 2011 said, okay, the Kellogg facility, as it, as it kind of operates, is adequate to treat that dry weather flow for Milwaukee at build-out. Now, those assumptions, we're testing those, you know, both the assumptions about what build-out is for Milwaukee and what the true treatment capacity is for Milwaukee. That was a kind of an engineer's estimate, and this facility plan that we're doing now, we'll go into some level of detail and be specific about what the, what the dry weather capacity is.
So, then the second part of my question is, you said that we hit that capacity. There was a point where we put this interceptor into place because we were having some issues.
Yes.
Managing the flow. And I'm guessing that was wet weather that was causing that, or we don't know?
You know, it was in the 90s.
Yeah.
I suspect it was wet weather, yes. Yeah. It may, they also had, this is again, sort of history that's been passed down to us, because it's from the 90s.
Sure.
But when they, they were peeling off the industrial area specifically, because there were particular high-strength dischargers.
Yep.
That were being sent to, that were having challenges managing at that treatment plant for its particular biological. challenges managing at that treatment plant for its particular biological characteristics, and they were better able to handle that at Tri-City. So there, there may have been some loading factors in that. I think it was probably a common, it's, it's actually a geographically convenient place to, to pull from too. So I think it was a happy coincidence that it was also high strength.
It makes a ton of sense. I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding how all of these numbers are playing together as we're having other discussions with the council around density. So that was helpful.
And an example of how this one district permit could work to our advantage is the treatment plant can be rated dry weather for a certain capacity. If it only has to treat for what's called BOD, which is biochemical oxygen demand, it can have, with the same basins, the same plant can be rated at X MGD. If, if Kellogg has to nitrify or remove ammonia, that takes volume, and that same physical plant would be derated down to X minus something MGD. If we can share our permit between the plants, we could still discharge from Kellogg because we have a total ammonia load, and we would better be able to remove ammonia at Tri-City. And so that works to our advantage, if we can do something like that. Does that make sense?
And, and the net water quality impact is still to a positive because the MBR treatment train that CCSD-1 constructed there is extremely effective at removing that particular pollutant, for example.
Yep. Okay. I think this builds.
Oh, look at that.
So as part of the 2008 to 2012 work that was done when the MBR was constructed at Tri-City's, a second inner tie was constructed, and I think, I don't know if it's a total ten?
That's wrong, too. Yeah, it doesn't, they don't reach far enough up. That's hilarious.
Yeah. It should go up to here, which is the Carmax, just behind the Carmax facility.
So I think it's a 10 MGD capacity currently at the, what I call the IT-2 pump station, plus the two or three at the inner tie one pump station. As we look forward and, and a capacity limitation identified in the collection system master plan is that we need to expand that capacity to send more flow down to Tri-City. And again, the collection system master plan is only looking at wet weather, so we'll look at it at dry weather as well coming up. We have to, we have to do some work up there for capacity, and part of that is to send it more down to Tri-City. Part of it is capacity just generally up in that area, but the work is to the tune of 50 to 60 million dollars. And we're not, we're not sure, there's several options. They all cost about the same. We'll be digging in over the next year to figure out exactly what we're going to do.
So I'm assuming that inner tie also reaches up to the inner tie two position?
Yeah, actually, it, it is just adding more pumps to inner tie two pump station.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
My recollection, although-
And another force main.
When the inner tie two line was constructed, for some of the sort of high-cost crossings, like major intersections or across, you know, streams, they actually pre-constructed some of the materials and just left it in place so that it would be less disruptive. The second time around, it was anticipated that eventually this would be needed.
Right. Some of the pieces of the force main are already in. So West currently has about 80 million dollars worth of projects, either under design or in construction. The Tri-City solids handling project is our biggest one at 33 million dollars. It expands the capacity, the solids treatment capacity at Tri-City by adding a digester. It also, it's about half the project is upgrading our existing facilities, de-watering, and adding a Cogen engine, as we talked about, to the plant to provide heat and power with the methane from the digester. We are just finishing the paperwork. We applied for and received a 1.8 million dollar grant for that Cogen work from Energy Trust of Oregon to put towards that. Now, I'll leave you with a final thought on INI. The collection system master plan identifies 19 basins where we need to remove 65% of the INI in those basins. The 19 basins are the worst basins where we can get the most bang for our buck in doing the work. INI is hard to chase. But we must, because all the work going forward, both at Kellogg and Tri-City, is based on removing that water from the system. And I think the number is in savings is in the range of 200 million dollars over the next 20 to 30 years, rather than build bigger pipes and send it down to the treatment plants and build more treatment plant. So Milwaukee has, everybody has a piece of this, including us. We're already working on chasing ours down on the Mount Talbot interceptor. Milwaukee, our models show, and we'll work with you as you develop your work, that some work needs to be done in, in Milwaukee before 2030, or the wet weather capacity of Kellogg, the 25 MTD will be exceeded. And that, that is downstream of the inner tie. So that work needs to be done. And again, we're happy to work side-by-side with you guys as you do your plan. We've worked with all the other cities on their plans to make sure our work matches your work.
And when you say it's going to be exceeded, is that because of the pipes deteriorating more? Is it because of growth, or both of those things?
Nope. It's due to pipes deteriorating more.
More.
Yeah.
So Lynn, I, I was just looking at, there's a fact sheet, permit fact sheet on, on the Kellogg plant.
Uh huh.
And it's a little bit older, but it's, it's based off of a letter dated August 8th of 2002, and it says that the Kellogg Creek Plant System has an average peaking factor of 2.5 for the years of 96 to 2001, an average peaking factor of 2.46 for the years 92 through 2001, which is well below the Oregon peaking factors in western Oregon of 4.0 to 6.0. And based on that evaluation, the sanitary sewer system is not experiencing excessive infiltration and inflow. And I, I bring that up because I know since then, we've done a lot of work on our sanitary sewer system. We've gone in and replaced lots of clay pipes and, you know, we've, we've, I know we have a big project out in Waverly, but we've done a lot of investment in our sanitary sewer infrastructure. So, yeah, I don't know.
And this, in no way should this be considered a criticism or the work, because if you look up there, you see that's West Lynn, Oregon City, Gladstone, Happy Valley, Milwaukee, and the West in the unincorporated area. Everyone has patches where there's something happening. You know, it could be that a, a pipe got busted by a tree, someone channeled into a downspout, a new development plugged into a pipe. And part of the work that we're talking about is working together to explore where in the system these, these breaks are to try and reduce that flow.
That link was also pulled. When, when did we, when, was this map actually created?
Over the last year.
Okay. So when did our last clay pipe project end? Do you guys know?
Just, just finished it.
Okay. So some of this may happen naturally, but I think that it's a partnership. And when staff got together, we did talk about the fact that this was something that we needed to work on as a team. And we made a commitment that we would continue to be at tables. We were looking at the master plans from both Kellogg and for us.
Yeah. And we're happy to share everything with you, our models, information and everything else.
And, and part of our master planning effort includes, I think, a pretty robust flow monitoring and infiltration and flow component to it, so.
Yeah. We, and there's, you know, this is all about data quality and resolution. And that, essentially, the entire city's marked red because we only had, based on one flow meter.
One meter.
And as you refine that understanding, you're going to find, as we did in some of our areas, much more specific areas that need to be dealt with and refine your understanding of that.
So why is there so much area on either side of 205 that isn't red? Why is there not, why is it not needed in those areas?
It's a relatively tight system. We, we did not see significant, or beyond kind of the industry standard, peak flows coming from those pipe sheds. Yeah. So there were 42 total pipe sheds, Lynn?
Yeah, in that neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah. So, so we didn't, 19 of 42 were sort of above the threshold of what we were looking at. So, and they were distributed across the system.
And we were number 19, so we're not the bottom of, you know, so, and we have some work to do, but really, we just barely met that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, in no way a criticism. It's just a fact.
I have a question back on the dry weather stuff, if we can shift to that. When you and I talked a few weeks ago, Lynn, you sent me a page from the 2013 plan, and it had the EDU capacity for the Kellogg plant set at about 40,000 EDU total. And then roughly the current flows there being somewhere around 35,000 EDU. So it had like a 5,000 EDU growth capacity. And the forecasts, and I think the planning at that, at that point at least, had almost all the, the extra growth in that basin being diverted down to the Tri-City's plant, like, like 100,000 new EDUs being taken care of over the next, you know, 70 years, 80 years.
Yeah. I, I don't know specifically, but that doesn't surprise me.
But, so I, I guess one of the questions I'm kind of interested in is sort of the reliability of that 5,000 EDU capacity number at this, at this plant, and kind of what options there are related to that.
And my answer would be, somebody else did that report going on 10 years ago, eight to 10 years ago. Give me six to nine months, and I'll come up with a number that I'm confident in.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
So can I ask a question back? I'm, I'm hearing from the, the questions that you're concerned whether or not Kellogg will be able to serve the capacity that might be generated by a more dense. So one caveat I will throw out there, our agreement limits the capacity around the treatment plant. That's our agreement.
That's fixed.
That's our agreement here. If, if you have a different vision for what you would like to see there and see an intensification to ensure that we have capacity, we can certainly have that conversation and ensure that we can serve you.
What year was that agreement from? The mayor and I were trying to-
2012.
It was, that was in the 12 agreement?
It finished in 12. I was remembering it happening in like 10, 11.
The construction was finished in 12. I don't know when the agreement was.
I was thinking it was more like-
I think it's 2011.
11. That's-
The IGA?
Yeah.
I think there's one other aspect to this that I, I find kind of interesting, and I'm not sure, again, if there's a good answer for it, but is, if, as you increase capacity, whether it's more expensive essentially to expand the, the capacity at the Kellogg plant, or if it's more efficient to expand the capacity by diverting more through the inner tie and pumping. And that may factor into kind of what strategies we'd want to take.
Absolutely.
Yep.
What, what portion of the flow into Kellogg is actually Milwaukee right now?
Well, I think, I didn't know, but Chris mentioned 25%.
Oh, that was the highest, right?
That, that was, that was-
That was the peak.
But that was pre the inner tie two being constructed. So frankly, I don't know that we-
That would be a great number for us to learn.
Typically don't split it out by where the flows are coming. Our goal is to make sure it's all clean when it leaves.
Right. We're, you know-
I mean, we have flow data from-
Because we're in this comp plan process, right? This is one of the limiting factors. Actually, it's in some ways the limiting factor. We can design our transportation system. We have capacity in our water system. So right now, what's sort of where we're capping is, is on sewer. So we are looking at all the different ways, and whether the capacity of the plant can be increased, whether more of it coming from outside of Milwaukee can be diverted through the inner ties. I, I mean, I assume that plants have a lifespan, and at some point, you have to sort of build a new plant. Or maybe not. Maybe you just build a new plant by, piece by piece over decades.
18 million dollars worth of doing that kind of right now.
So in that process with, given that a lot of the new processes are more efficient on a square foot basis, at least the ones I'm, I mean, looking at Vancouver and looking at places like that where I'm wondering if we can't, if we change the contract, if we couldn't increase the capacity of Kellogg and/or divert more through the inner tie from outside.
Anything's possible. You know, Lynn can design anything. I mean, it's, it's, it's a matter of expense.
Cost. So what we do is develop these, develop alternatives. First, we have to understand our base facts. So we'll be coming back to you, talking about different assumptions on growth, I think, given that we, we're going to go with what we had, and that doesn't sound like we need to, it sounds like we need to have conversations about what could be. And, and just do some basic, you know, laying out the existing conditions, what's coming in, where our projections are going for 20 years. And then we look at alternatives, you know, global alternatives between the two plants. And the alternatives are exactly what you said. Do we divert upstream? What could we do at Kellogg to treat more? If that's the case, if it doesn't have the capacity, do we pump at Kellogg and get some, you know, stuff down Tri-City?
That seems like the most expensive.
It's possible, yeah. So we're just going to look at all the alternatives, but first we have to get our base, basis figured out. And that's what we'll be doing.
Go back to the inner tie slide for one sec. So as I was thinking about this, trying to answer that question of what, where, how much flow is Milwaukee responsible for, we've got about 10,000 housing units that are all down, downflow from the inner tie. There's also about another 10,000 housing units that are in our UGMA area, which are essentially west of 205. And then there's some stuff here that's unaccounted for. And so figure about another 10,000 there. And there's probably 10 to 15,000 on the other side that's coming through is my, was my deep, rough estimate guess, in figuring, figuring out how we got to 35,000 to 5,000 EDU left over. And we just like, you know, looking at the rough numbers and kind of guessing we got figures right. So we ended up being a little, a little less than a third or around a third of the, of the total flow today is my rough estimate.
Well, that's what, I would, I'll tell you, that's what Kenny Asher used to say back when he was doing this stuff in 2010 or so. And he would say we were using about a third.
Just to, on Lynn's, on this slide and, and kind of on our conversation, one of the things that I'm proud of, when we formed the West partnership, we formed a new advisory body, that's a 16-member panel. Unfortunately, I overlooked the Milwaukee agreement, and so we're going to rectify that. So with Milwaukee, it'll be 17 people. But what we did is we also formed a technical, it's not an advisory committee, but it's a working group. And we'd not had that ever at West, where we have folks like Peter and Jen, and the public work staff from the other cities that we serve, sitting down with Lynn and her engineering staff and, and talking through these ideas. Because by the time, well, I've seen this INI issue coming now for a couple of years. I knew that it was going to be the next big thing, and that we were going to have to cooperate to solve the problem, and that we want to make good policy. And I know that we're completely trustworthy, and you believe everything that we say about what needs to happen. But I also know that you value your own staff. And so we really wanted to build a, a process and a forum for good technical understanding of these issues so that, so that we can have well-informed and policies and, or financial arrangements around solving the problem. So if we can have a common understanding amongst the engineering staff, it makes the policy so much easier. I'm going to go quickly.
The future. Oh, wait. No, that would make no sense.
What we're not showing there, actually in 2011, there was a big storm that took out our outfall up at our, we have a wastewater treatment plant that serves about 900 customers up on Mount Hood. And the Sandy River is a very active system. And yeah, we lost an outfall. But we are definitely seeing different- But we are definitely seeing different character of storm events. And resiliency around, not just around climate change and seismic events is really important to us. And it's gonna be more and more important moving forward. It's something that we think that we need to partner with the community on to understand what their values are, what they're willing to pay for, as well as our peers in the industry, water providers, other, other sanitary sewer providers, so that we really have what I like to call, you know, a resilient system for the, for the region. I will say, so the Sandy, for example, up at the Sandy River, we've got two pump stations that are on either side of the river. And we need to, we're in the process of, of looking at properties outside of that active channel migration zone to move those. So it's something that we are constantly, constantly working on. Another example is the Eighty-Second Drive Bridge. So if you drive down two oh five over the Clackamas High Rocks, if your head south is to your right, you'll see a bridge there. That used to be the, the traffic bridge across the Clackamas. We, we now own that bridge, and we, it's a bike ped bridge and hang, and we hang our, actually our, our two inner ties are, that's how they cross the Clackamas River. So one of the projects that Lynn is working on is to replace one of the abutments and seismically upgrade that bridge. So it will be more seismically stable than either the ninety-nine bridge across the Clackamas or the two oh five bridge across the Clackamas. So it could be a vital link north to south in the event of a big seismic event.
And we are sizing it so it'll handle emergency vehicles.
Right.
So this is the real video of what a pipe looks like in the inside?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So is that, I, I take it that's a clay pipe?
It's one of ours.
When we talk about clay pipes, that's clay?
I don't know that that's clay, it doesn't look like clay to, well, I don't know.
It looks like clay.
Yeah, that's what he's made.
So, I know the, so there's an issue of infiltration, but isn't there also the issue of what's coming out of the pipe?
Exfiltration.
Exfiltration?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so I know the state has funds for like moving people off of septics onto sewer. Do they not also see this as a, because of the harm to the, to the aquifer and to the rivers and everything? Do they not see the harm and that there's no state funding for kind of replacing these old...
Not grant funding?
No.
They'll loan us the money, if we want to do it, yeah, sure. Good. I just, this is a, a project that we just recently finished. This is what we call our Carley Creek Wetland Treatment Facility. That brown body of water on the top is the Clackamas River. In Carley Creek, you can see it on the bottom portion of the picture. What we did there, you know, I mentioned that we, in our surface water program, we have rules and regulations for new development. But there's a lot of development that went in before there were considerations for water quality. The Clackamas Industrial Area is a great example of that. What this facility does is capture about four hundred acres of that runoff, and we put in seventeen hundred feet of new pipe to reroute it to this facility. Before, it was just going straight to Carley Creek. And in addition to being beautiful and looking like an elephant from the air...
I was saying, I'm so glad you said that. I looked at it and went, what's an elephant?
Yeah, isn't that nice?
That is actually a photograph, which is fairly amazing, it's not a sketch.
Wow, yeah, wow.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's a photo, not a sketch.
It's a photo, it's an aerial photo, not a sketch.
Wow.
We restored about fourteen hundred feet of Carley Creek, large woody debris, re, reformed the channel. It was, it had been a industrial, a farm, and had been channelized and incised, and had all the problems that an urban and a, and a agricultural stream has, which is terrible water quality runoff from the industrial area, and then channelization and, and incision. So just a project we're very proud of. But again, we, we need to focus, we've got other properties that we're gonna be... This was by far the biggest surface water project that West has ever done. It was about a four million dollar project. PGE contributed almost four hundred thousand to that through their Clackamas Basin funding mechanism. And we're gonna be doing more and more of this. We think that it's a, it's gonna be a big tool and along the lines of that resiliency in maintaining water quality in the urban-built environment.
And along those lines, A, I'll note, when we look at the rate zone map, we do that in part because, as part of the formation of West, CCSD one had outstanding debt. And we, so we maintain the idea of rate zones until that has gone, and frankly, that'll be shifting away. But from our perspective, we're trying to look at everything from a watershed perspective, because water doesn't care about jurisdictional boundaries, and our focus is on water quality. This is an example of a project. Our surface water staff is looking at other areas, and Three Creeks, right on the, the borders of your city, is another possible project where we, we have been doing work there, but it could be significant work that we'd be doing there that would benefit, from an upstream perspective, the water quality of the city.
So the, the state, through the State Revolving Fund Loan Program, DEQ and the legislature prioritized green infrastructure projects associated with, and wanted to encourage them. So while it's a loan, so essentially the, the money that we're gonna borrow through this SRF for construction of our, our digester project, say that would be at a two point five percent interest rate. If we agree to do a project like, like this or something at Three Creeks, they will reduce that interest rate to one percent. And the delta is what we use to do that stormwater, surface water project. So the project itself doesn't, doesn't suffer, but it, but they incentivize us by, by allowing us to pay a lower interest rate if we're willing to do those projects.
So, so knowing that, from a financial perspective, what we actually ended up doing is borrowing the entirety of the amount that we needed to construct the solids handling project, thirty-three and a half million dollars, even though we actually have some cash on hand and we didn't have to borrow the whole amount. We did that to create the maximum amount of money available to be able to do the surface water project that would be the corollary of being able to, to do that work. So we're, we're pretty excited about the opportunity. And you should be hearing more about that in about a year or so.
Yeah, all right, next. Moving forward, we really, and again, whether it's, whether it's infrastructure resiliency or, or just providing service or focusing on water quality, partnerships, education, and outreach is what we're gonna be all about. As I said before, the public needs to understand and support the work that we do. And particularly in the wastewater industry, probably drinking water too, we've not been out there talking to people about it. When we do, you know, because of the solids handling project and the issues around that, I, for the last two years, have been doing a lot of speaking at business alliances, rotary clubs, chambers of commerce, about who we are and what we do. And we're finding that it's really paying off. When people understand what the state of this infrastructure, the importance of it from a public health, environmental, and economic standpoint, they are willing to pay for it. And so we're also partnering with Solve, Classroom, Tours, Events, Festivals, Forums, doing virtually anything we can to get out there in the public. One thing I wanted to mention is we also have, we have a grant program. It's called the River Health Stewardship Grant Program. It's a couple hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, this year, for projects in the community, anything from a Boy Scout troop wanting to do something to soil and water conservation districts or watershed councils, or private businesses, up to thirty thousand dollars each. I have a flyer that I will leave for you, and the applications are due at the end of the month, April thirtieth. Another way of us leveraging our...
Is it only in West District, or is that also with yours?
It's within the West District, yeah.
Although, well, that's the one I sent you an email last week. I heard that Gail was meeting with Nicky Wick and some, some businesses in our, on industrial, on International Way that are actually in Milwaukee, but because they're on Menthorne Creek, which feeds to Three Creeks, they were considered eligible.
Well, Gail's very creative. If it's a good project, she will probably find a way. I also should mention that the, one of the Board of County Commissioners initiatives from, it's been a year or two now, they directed West to, and Department of Transportation and Development, to explore the idea of forming a county-wide surface water district or, or plan. So we are in the process of doing that. So that could very well, if, if comes to fruition, allow a county-wide application of, of funding.
And again, that's to try to target a watershed approach. I don't want to wax too nerdy on you, but are you familiar with, from the surface water standpoint, we are regulated under the MS four permits? Clackamas County is unique in that we have one permit for all of the urban area, and we're all co-permittees together, and they treat us just like they do the city of Portland, even though individually, each city is considered too small to fit in that higher level category. But because we're so urbanized, DEQ made the decision to say, you all should just work together, because this impact to the watershed is significant as an urban area. But because lots of cities working desperately, not a whole lot has been able to be accomplished, because everyone has just a little piece of the watershed as they go around. And part of this conversation is to say, how can we really try to work together to make things work?
I was just gonna add on to what Lisa said about that meeting. So we, we actually, I had our Environmental Services Coordinator, Chair Sun, go to that meeting on last, I think it was earlier this week or, or last week?
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday. And they met with Dave Killerbred and Megat Airs, Airframe Systems, I think it is, and looked at some potential sort of deep paving projects. They weren't really sure what they were gonna apply, what kind of grant they were gonna apply, but they looked at maybe doing some deep paving and removing some impervious surface areas.
Fantastic, yeah. The mayor may recognize that picture on the lower left. That was this year's Clackamas River Cleanup Day. You were there. Anyway, go ahead. Yeah, maybe we can skip this. I was just gonna talk more about collaboration and partnerships and needs around that. Go ahead and go to the next one. Oops, I guess we're done.
So going back to that last slide, time of challenges. I mean, I, I think we are likely to see something that looks like ninety-six in the not-too-distant future and worse. As we're thinking about the work that we're doing on both of those plants probably, are we thinking about how we can protect from...
Yes. Our, the membrane bioreactor facility that was built next to our, our conventional eighty-six activated sledge plant and, at the Tri-City campus is about four feet higher?
It is.
Yeah, and as we replace electrical switchgear and things like that at our, at the other facility... I mean, we can't, we can't raise an, an entire facility that was built in nineteen eighty-six.
From building seawall.
Yeah, yeah. But where we can, where we can raise, get electrical out of holes in the ground, or, and raise the elevation of, what do you call them? Transformers and things like that, yes, we're doing that.
That's a, that's a piece of the solids project, is all our power distribution is getting raised up. And the, everything is being built with a floor level a foot above the hundred-year storm, which is the ninety-six storm, so.
And the, in a relationship between climate change and the wet weather issue and the INI issue is strong. I think Greg mentioned we're seeing more intense storms in the winter and drier summers, which means that the, the peaking factors we're experiencing at the plant is exacerbating. And Lynn has been doing the technical analysis of saying, is it cheaper to treat rainwater or try to keep rainwater out of the system? And the answer is, it's much cheaper to keep it out of the system, because you're not expending the chemicals and electricity to, to handle what is in essence relatively clean water. But, so in some ways, even with the investments that we've been doing and your staff has been doing in the INI reduction strategy, the curve that we have to keep up with may be getting steeper. So part of the collaborative work that Lynn is leading around the project is to see what exactly we need to do and the time whether we need to do it to make sure that we stay ahead of that curve.
Right. And I'm happy to share with Peter and Jen, we looked at storms as part of that plan. You pick a design storm and build your model around it. We definitely found that there's more storms, you know, closer together, and the, the severe storms are closer together. We, you designed to a five-year storm, return period storm, where we could, where we could, without undue expense, we're designing to the ten-year storm, to build in some safety factor.
And forever, that's been a, a five-year event that we've designed to, so. I guess I wanted to make sure I thank Milwaukee and the council and the mayor for participating in the technical working group and the Good Neighbor Committee, and thank you in advance for the work that we're gonna be doing together on INI. One thing that you will be hearing more about from us and hopefully others as we make our travels is this idea of infrastructure resiliency. So we, I'm partnering with Todd Highgurken from Clackamas River Water, and a guy named Greg DiLoretto, who's on our advisory committee, the vice chair of our advisory committee. He's a longtime industry professional. He was the former president of the American Society of Civil Engineers, kind of a luminary. And he's currently leading the ASCE's Infrastructure Report Card Project. So every two years, they do a national evaluation of the nation's infrastructure and give it a grade, including wastewater, drinking water, roads, bridges, that kind of thing. And so we are doing a speakers forum around infrastructure resiliency. The next one is gonna be July tenth at seven thirty, eight AM, at the Clackamas County Business Alliance. So if you'd like to learn more about what's coming down the road on that, please join us.
So I guess I thought you were gonna bring your rates and your SDC stuff too.
Oh, well, we can talk, we can talk a little bit about that. But the, my understanding is that that, that's what we're gonna be talking about May twenty-third at the advisory committee meeting.
Right.
Right. We're in the process now of, of developing our budget, and we will be, well, I'll let Chris talk a little bit about budget.
Hi, I'm, if you would like. I wasn't sure what you were gonna be interested in, and I actually brought a model that we have been using for our rate projections, if you would be interested in seeing that. Hooray, it was worth it, printing it out. So what you will see here is we took the hard work Lynn did in creating the Capital Improvement Plan, and then modeled that across the years, looked at our, you know, revenues from rates, from SDCs, from existing reserves, and tried to create a rate model. And our advisory committee gave us a bracket, and they said, no less than inflation, no more than ten percent for rate increases. But frankly, ten percent seemed really high to us, so our internal target was five percent. And we've been working really hard to try to manage our budget, and the vast majority of it is being driven by the Significant Capital Improvement Program that Lynn is leading. And right now, that's what we're seeing, and we're, we're holding to that projection. So we, we're still in the process of developing the budget. We'll be meeting with our county administrator next week, and then drafting it to be shared with the budget committee and the advisory committee, and get the feedback from the public. But we are targeting a five percent rate increase profile, and that will allow us to accomplish the work that Lynn has identified that's critical to protect the public health and the environment from our groups.
So just in transparency, originally, this was actually supposed to be a budget presentation to all of you about the rates, and we obviously had a slight miscommunication. I do want to ask, just so that this body has it, if we can get a copy of what you submit to Clackamas County as your budget? Because part of the discussion we've been having is just, this is great, but it's a very, it's a straight number. It doesn't give us a lot of sense for how those funds are being spent. We understand that we are not your managers, but we would appreciate it as you're coming to us asking for rates, to have an ability to actually look at it in that kind of depth.
Well, yeah, and if, that's probably my fault then, because my understanding, you know, this came about because of the snafu with Milwaukee not being on the, on the advisory committee, which is, per the twenty-twelve, or eleven, maybe, agreement. It says that Milwaukee will, that, that West will consult with Milwaukee on rates. And the way that that will be done is by having a Milwaukee representative on the advisory committee during the budget conversation. So, and that's what we're doing. And so I, I guess I assumed that that was, where that, that was that venue and that we, this was different. So I apologize.
Well, so we're still...
But we're happy to share whatever we can.
Well, I do think that that opens up a conversation for council, if you guys want to have it right now, about who that should be, or do you want to wait on that?
About what?
Who, how that seat is managed, or if you want to do that later.
I don't know if you want to do that now or not.
Okay.
But I guess, I just am trying to still understand, like this, these numbers go to twenty thirty, but you've just told us that you're spending the next two years on a facilities management plan. So this is just sort of, I mean, this isn't based on anything that's really budgeted and identified. This is just sort of a general target to hit?
Well, I would say, this is, this is based on our existing capital improvement plan.
Which is a five-year plan.
Which is, so.
And we update it every year. And as we finish the, we did the collection system, as we do the treatment, we will have something laid out for 20 years. We'll still take it in five-year chunks and we'll still move it every year, and things change, but that's what it's based on.
Yeah. And one interesting component from, from your perspective, the, the blue portion of it is not you, right? That's the collection portion, you have your own rate that you charge, you wouldn't be seeing that. The purple portion of it is related to the debt service that was, the money that was borrowed to construct the 2011 expansion at the Tri-City Plant for the benefit of the CCSD Milwaukee Rate Group. That runs through about 2035, 2036. You'll notice the number actually gets smaller every year as you experience growth in your city and in other cities. We have more people to spread that cost over, so the number shrinks, but then that debt's going to be retired in the mid 2030s, and then it goes away completely. Any new debt that is being borrowed, we're building that into the wholesale, if it's related to the treatment plants, or the retail, the blue portion, if it's related to the collection system, portions of the rate. So, there won't be this surcharge, it will be directly related, and that cost is not spread across just the folks receiving wholesale in Rate Zone 2 or the CCSD 1 Milwaukee rate folks, that's across everybody in the system.
So, what is, sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Can you go back to your intertie slide? So, you're, so, it was said when we were talking about this, that really those interties are not, everybody in Milwaukee is going to Kellogg and not going into those interties. So, this purple part of this bar graph is what bothers me. That's serving growth, that's serving Happy Valley, that's serving growth, that's not serving Milwaukee. So, why are we paying for it?
That was the exact conversation we had from 2008 to 2011, and the short answer was, we either expanded at Kellogg or we expanded at the Tri-City Service District Plant. The cheapest option for everybody was to expand at the Tri-City Plant. So, we weren't looking at which flows went to which plant to allocate that cost, it was a system cost, and we spread that cost from everybody that's participating in the system. So, we actually have some folks that, you know, have said, well, my flows only go to Tri-City, if you're making these $18 million of improvements at Kellogg, why do I have to pay for that? The answer is, it's part of the system. And it's the lowest cost option is what we're pursuing. When Lynn looks at what to do, she says, what's the cheapest for everybody and what's gonna protect public health and the environment? And then we operate as a system.
There's only room at Kellogg because the other stuff was built to make it go somewhere else.
Yeah. Right. But again, it's, it's built for growth, that's not the growth in Milwaukee. Now, I realize we're getting into a different discussion now about the potential growth in Milwaukee, but I have felt for a decade of, I'm a close neighbor of the Kellogg Plant, and I felt, and I was involved in following the Clearwater and all the stuff that happened after that, and I felt for a decade or more that we're subsidizing growth in Happy Valley. I mean, our ratepayers are subsidizing growth in Happy Valley, and Happy Valley's about to grow. I just went to a dinner where they presented all their growth projections as they moved their new master planning to move east, they're gonna have a lot more growth and, you know.
Yeah, I would say, though, a counterpoint to that, I mentioned earlier that we, we talked in DC about providing grants for these communities that haven't been growing and don't have the rate base to replace these 40-year-old facilities. And to the extent that they pay in SDCs to add capacity, we also are spreading the replacement and asset management across a much wider rate base. So, frankly, if Milwaukee was kind of on your own and looking to pay for what, both what we're doing at that facility now actively and moving into the future, it would hurt. It would hurt a lot. And, and so, those ratepayers that are contributing from Happy Valley are essentially paying, they could be saying the same thing, well, why am I paying to replace equipment that I, that Milwaukee used for 40 years and we didn't? So, it goes both ways.
But you are not alone. In, in having that reaction, we've heard that from, from several folks, and that's part of the conversation we have at our advisory committee is, you know, what's the way to talk about rate equity and the impact of it? One sort of telling fact that Lynn identified in her CIP is that over half of our investments that we're anticipating over the next five years is asset replacement. It's, a lot of this infrastructure was built in the 70s and 80s, it's wearing out, so when a new home connects in Happy Valley, they're paying for the replacement of something that was, been fully depreciated. We, we do charge, in theory, we do recover the cost of the new infrastructure through system development charges. We do have to, it's not 100%, though, just to be clear, because unlike most other infrastructures like parks, we have to build it all before anyone can connect, right? We can't have sewage show up in our, not be able to treat it and then hope the SDCs build up enough to be able to treat it. We, we make sure it's clean before it leaves the plant. So, we preconstruct and then collect the SDCs once the infrastructure's already in As long, as long as we're talking about SDCs, I'll flag that another conversation that's gonna be happening at our advisory committee in May is, we took the numbers that Lynn generated for what is growth-eligible, mapped that across the anticipated new folks showing up in the region, and again, this is across not just Happy Valley, but yourselves, for the unincorporated area, which isn't a whole lot, but Oregon City, Westland, Gladstone, everybody has some degree of development or investment, and said, what would the system development charge be for someone new coming into the system? The initial wave of analysis suggests it's gonna be a little over $11,000 per connection. And now you start having, and what we're engaging at the, with the advisory committee is a policy discussion of, is that what we want to charge, right? Or do we wanna get 100% cost recovery off of this? Or is that going to drive up the cost of housing and disincentivize people from building housing? Is there a policy trade-off that we wanna look at to try and make sure that we stay competitive or affordable?
Now, is that number the same for wholesale customers and?
That is the wholesale rate.
That is the wholesale SDC?
Yes.
And so, you have another SDC for building the, the lines in Happy Valley on top of that?
Yes, but it's relatively small compared to the whole, the treatment plants are certainly most expensive as far as the, the growth component goes. And your, your own system would, you would be generating your own city collection system SDC that could be charged as well.
And, and this is not unusual, I mean, virtually every city and district deals with this. And it comes down, the last time that Wes revised the SDCs significantly was just after I started, and I really didn't have much to do with the conversation. But essentially, what, what happened was, we said, here's our five-year CIP, it's gonna result in a SDC of $12,000 per household, and the board of county commissioners said, what are they doing, what are they charging in Washington County? We wanna be competitive with Washington County, you know? So, so we're looking at, we will be looking at different options from, you know, there's, always some people that are saying, growth should pay for growth no matter what, and that's, that's one proposal that we would make. And then there's, well, what would, what does it mean for the rate? If we have, instead of 11,000, if we have 8,000 or 7,000 to be competitive with the region, that, what is that, what is that increment on a rate? And it's surprisingly small, actually. But again, that's a conversation we're gonna be having at the advisory committee and with our board over the next few months.
And can you tell, can you just remind me what the timeline is? Because I think you, you asked a question about sort of, you know, and you said something about chicken and egg, about, you know, the EDU and the revisiting what EDU is in the SDC? Because I, I, I mean, I have pretty big concerns about, you know, one-for-one. I mean, you know, we're pretty limited in how many Happy Valley-type homes we can build here, right? So, I think that, it should, I think EDU conversations should happen before SDC conversations, especially if you're thinking it's gonna be $12,000 per household, because.
No, we're not thinking that. I, I, I'm just saying, when you, when you run.
If that's an argument that's gonna be made at this discussion, I think that that needs to be part of the conversation.
So, what you will see, it's actually two parallel conversations. One is basically, when you look at the way the SDCs are calculated, it's set by state statute, and it's based on our demographic projection of how many people are gonna show up, it's right, and we use it as an approximation for, for what's gonna happen. We can still slice and dice how those EDUs are allocated betwixt new connections as they show up without changing the sort of overall demographic truth of how many people are going to be showing up and what portion of our assets are gonna be dedicated towards serving that. So, our initial conversation is, do we wanna charge the full-mill deal or a percentage of to try and stay competitive? And then, parallel to that, but frankly, it's gonna go, take a little bit longer because it's a, it's a robust conversation that we want to have with the community, is what are, how are we going to allocate that betwixt units? You know, are we going to look at, you know, tiny homes and ADUs or .3, you know? And are we going to incentivize in essence? And then you, you can shift higher on commercial or industrial uses and sort of talk about those allocations or utilizations. And we will have several different models that talk about how those are spread across different customer bases and then look for basically guidance and input for a rule adoption that we would then apply across to everybody. And then, one of our goals is to make sure that we're all kind of doing the same thing, so it's consistent. So, as we talk about this, we also wanna talk to your staff and your planners about how you're implementing an EDU evaluation and how you view a connection to make sure we're, we're being as consistent as possible, so if someone's showing up, we're all talking the same language.
So, on a completely different subject, that, we've, we've run into a couple of issues around annexations of properties that are literally surrounded by Milwaukee but are currently in the county and are being told that we can't, the county can't force them to annex to Milwaukee.
Right. And we can't refuse service, right?
Right. So, what we're told is, the simple answer is for us to become a, to annex to the district. So, then, then you could, I would need that answer to be, you would, not could, force annexation within whatever our UGMA, our, you know, whatever we've worked that out to be.
We did, that's what we do for Happy Valley, yes.
So.
Oh, it's, yeah. I, I wish it were quite that easy. Do you want the complex answer or the simple answer? The simple answer is, yes, we totally made that happen.
Okay, that's what I hold you to.
Yeah. Oh, wait, you're recording this? Let me clarify.
Exactly.
It'll be a video as well.
Let me clarify. So, the, as far as the, the West goes, our choice about whether to serve someone or not serve someone is the moment of annexation. So, when we had the, the service, the service districts still exist, and those are the actual jurisdictional boundaries of West, when someone shows up and says, I wanna develop, if they're not in one of our districts, for example, someone shows up on the outside of Oregon City and says, I want sewer, we say, you have to annex into the Tri-City Service District and to the city of Oregon City before we will serve you. That, and we can, we can validly agree not to annex someone unless they also annex into the city. That's exactly what we do with Happy Valley. Unfortunately, the area around you is pretty much already annexed into CCSD number one. One of the last large areas that was not was what is now sort of known as the North Clackamas Revitalization Area, which is within your UGMA, and it was an area full of cesspools and, you know, unsewered, relatively low income, and we partnered with Urban Renewal and the city to try and advance sewer in that area, and we saw dramatic improvements in water quality there, so we consider that a success. But it also brought sewer to an area that was part of the city sys, you know, sort of UGMA view, often with sewer being one of the primary motivators for people to annex into a city. Having said that, what we were trying to do, we had that conversation, I think it was in Onion Farm, there was a farm.
Yeah.
Who is trying to find a creative way to incentivize or create a manner in which property undeveloped or looking to increase its intensity of development that's already inside the service district boundary to still have to annex into the city for service. And so, we, you may recall, we had a meeting where we sat around a table and brainstormed, and the proposal that we came up with is, there is a law that says if the sewage is passing through pipes owned by the city, then the city can validly require annexation. The challenge was, none of these properties are flowing through the city system, they're throwing through the service district system. So, what we said was, if we could get Milwaukee inside the jurisdictional boundaries and then basically have a shared ownership relationship, not just for the city's pipes, but in part the collection system of West as a whole, then that would, for the areas that drained within your UGMA, for the, the UGMA areas, we wouldn't give you the whole, make you be responsible for the whole system all the way down. That could give the hook legally for the city saying, if you're within our UGMA and you're intensifying your use or your development, then you are required to annex into the city. But it, it was a multi-step process. We had some conversations with your lawyers, and they're like, that's creative, it sounds really complex, I don't know if it's worth it.
Well, now, wasn't there another, I mean, there was another potential, which was water, right? Rather than stormwater? Wasn't there a discussion about Clackamas River Water?
Well, yeah, but right now, all of that area is served by Clackamas River Water. As far as I know, that talk has stalled.
Or no?
Has stalled. We, we need to start up.
Gets stalled on our end or their end?
Well, there were a couple of different reasons, but we, they, they.
Peter, can we get rid of this?
Yeah. I, I think it's sort of stalled on both ends. You know, we met several times, was it last summer, I think, with, with CRW, and we just weren't getting anywhere with them wanting to sort of go past that sort of initial discussion phase of, of doing that, you know, putting together or having that discussion with their, their board of directors and getting guidance from them, so.
And this was on a water agreement, an MOU? Can you remind me what the type of agreement was that we were trying to get to?
It was a, an intergovernmental agreement.
An amendment, basically, to the existing one that would carve off sort of the, the properties that have the highest potential for growth close to the city.
So, expand a little bit, unpack the sentence around co-ownership of the pipes.
Well, the, the challenge, of course, is you, as the city, to be able to require annexation, have to have some degree of ownership.
Right.
The challenge is, it's outside your jurisdictional boundaries, right? So, how, how do you have some sort of jurisdictional relationship that allows you to talk about something outside the city that can then force people to annex in? The conversation that we had, or the brainstorm, frankly, it didn't get much beyond, I recall a conversation with your attorneys, and they sort of said, sounds clever, we'll see if the city's interested, and then, that's the last I heard of it. And certainly, we are willing to have the conversation, didn't die at our end. But what that would mean is some degree of agreement that would show basically a transfer both ways, right? That the, the, the city would have some degree of ownership outside its boundaries and West, because then, then you're, you're talking about flow for people within our current service boundaries, flowing through either our current system or your system. So, it basically become a shared ownership of the pipe. You could, it doesn't necessarily have to result in any sort of financial transfer. I mean, it would be a discussion about, you know, maintenance or how do, how do we work together to ensure things, you know, happen the way they're supposed to happen. It was a, an attempt to find some workaround, around basically the lay of the land that we inherited.
So, is, you said when you started that if it comes through our pipes, that gives us a hook?
Yes.
So, it seems like the question is gonna be different for different parcels, right? Because that Onion Farm was probably close enough that it, you know, and maybe the topography or whatever, that it would not come through Milwaukee pipes. But there are places along Linwood Avenue and, you know, further north where it probably would come to Kellogg and come to. And in those cases, we would be able to, you would be able to require annexation?
My recollection, but now we're getting into the deep dark years ago, is.
It has to have been that many years ago.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's been a long time since I've located that agreement. We had a, basically a co-development agreement around Milwaukee's UGMA and the NCRRA area, which is probably the only area that you might see geographically flow towards the city. We have a portion of our properties that actually flow up into Portland, and we have an agreement with Portland for act. an agreement with Portland for access to the Lent's trunk, and, but the majority of them are kind of flowing down, the creek is the basin, right? And it tends to flow down to the, to the creek and, and up, and that is, for the most part, outside, that's a West-owned pipe. So, the, the Onion Farm, while right next to the city, didn't, wasn't going to flow to the city, and there's a fair number of properties that will do the same.
Yeah.
And I, I would be willing to have more conversations. For me, you know, we, we put a map together, so the area between, on the, the east side of Zone 2A to, say, 205, we, we do all the development review in that area, it's unincorporated Clackamas County. And so, we looked at, over the last seven years or so, what development has happened that would trigger a sewer connection or a potential annexation. And it was kind of a checkerboard. There's a lot of, a lot of ones that are out near 205 that the city may not be prepared or willing to provide services for and would not be interested in having them annex into the city at this point. I think that part of the devil in the detail, but, but then there were some that were close and the city, you know, may want to. I concede that as the city grows out, it makes sense for that, that collection system to, to grow with it, and we certainly, but it's going to be, there's a high potential for just kind of a crazy quilt of who's responsible for what. And so, I think any agreement that we would want to get in would, would clarify that kind of orderly progression through time, so that there's clarity about ownership, maintenance, and service provision.
So, the local collection component currently in the budget, you said, was around $12 this year?
About 13, yes.
It's showing 1328 in 2020, so I'm assuming it's a little less now. What, what, what is our, does anybody off the top of their head know our local collection portion of it?
I've got, I, I had it up just a minute ago, right? Hold on.
Just a second, I have one of my bills.
It is our... Yeah, 912 is the fixed piece, and then there's a, a small commodity piece. So, the average, you know, another $10?
Another, $10 total?
$19. Based on, based on the flow?
So, compared to the, they're 1328, we're charging 19. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I've never seen that. I don't know, nobody charges less than we do, in my experience.
No, 19, not 9.
Yeah, 19. 19, oh, okay. I thought you said 9. Yeah. Part, part of it is also, I believe you have a consumptive-based allocation, and we, we use EDUs as a proxy for consumption, but we don't measure consumption because we're not a water provider like the city is. So, it's not a total apples-to-apples comparison, but yeah, we're within that range.
Based on what he's looking at, I'd say we'll have to get back to you.
We have to what?
We'll have to get you a comparative document and email that out to council.
Just in, in our budget, it's in our budget book, we have a regional comparison of, of rates, and my, my recollection is only Gladstone was from a retailer, collection system charged less than us, and that's because...
That's because they weren't replacing it twice.
Exactly. And they were, they will fast outpace us in the near future.
Greg, as you were speaking earlier about that sort of marching out towards 205 with the annexation process, were you discussing that checkerboard assuring that we have clarity of roles as we annex, as if you own the pipes or don't own the pipes, just per the other conversation?
Well, I think that was what he was saying, crazy quilt, right? If we, if we own the pipes for this little block and they own the pipes for that little block, and, you know, it could, could get really weird really fast.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I guess part of what I'm also asking then in that is, we do this all the time, right, with roads and other things throughout the county. Have you had other agreements with other cities where that has been clarified as annexations have occurred?
What we've done is, we've actually had properties sign consent to annexation agreements.
Yeah.
So, they come in and the, we basically pre-arrange it with the city. The city says, "We're not ready, we don't want to just cherry-stem out a road and, and take all that on, but when we get there, we do want them to annex." So, as part of the condition of service to annex into our service district, we also require them to sign a document that's recorded against the property that says that when the city arrives and says, "We're ready for you to annex," you automatically annex.
So, that is the same way we handle water right now. So, we are doing a process by which we can manage when entire clumps will come in and when we're going to be managing or not managing the asset. I'm not saying it's not a problem, I'm saying there are ways that we currently manage that. If council is interested, we can share that with you.
If one of the, if I were to leave you with something around this topic of, you know, how people connect and how we serve and how we work together, one of the common phrases I like to use is, "This is an economy of scale business that's focused on a watershed." So, when we talk about this, the reason why we have two big treatment plants and not dozens of small ones is because it's highly inefficient, you have to have labor allocation. Part of Lynn's modernization program is to increase automation around it, so you don't have to have as much staffing. And so, part of what we're seeing is trends in the industry overall is what West just went through, which is a consolidation of trying to be more regional in perspective so you can better align yourself with the watershed and accomplish, frankly, with the economy of scale portion of the business, you, you're just more effective because we're no longer getting those federal dollars. So, part of the conversations we're going to have going forward, particularly around INI and the best way to serve your community, is what's the most efficient way we can find to meet the requirements that, making sure that public health is being protected, the environment's being protected, and it's, it's often a collaborative model.
So, the areas where you're doing the sewer, does that match exactly the areas where you're doing surface water as well, where you're doing stormwater?
Yes. Zone 2 is where we do surface waters.
So, you don't do surface water in Westland or Oregon City?
There's a tiny... Zone, Zone 3 is surface water only. Right. Yeah, but, yeah. It, it's relatively small from a rate base because it's just surface water, but that's a part of the 12-TMDL. Effectively, we don't really do any work out there. It's, it's, I think we collect $200,000 a year, and it's mostly from monitoring and reporting. It was an artifact of the original 12, the first 12 in TMDL that was done back in the early 90s. It, it is kind of our potential vessel or vehicle for a countywide surface water program because now we have TMDLs, the state cleanup plans, for virtually every watershed in the Clackamas. So, that was the answer for the 12-tin when it came out, it just hasn't been replicated. But we could easily kind of piggyback onto that and extend that out to the county.
Yeah.
Malala putting has it as well, so... Sandy. Yeah. So, we're seeing multiple requirements, and right now, the county is the designated management agency for responding to, in the, in the rural areas, but that's, it's primarily just roads, you know, drainage ditches and whatnot, and there's not a real opportunity to do water quality work.
Nothing around ag, heavy ag use, like, I don't know if there aren't any few lots in Clackamas County.
From, from a jur... We don't have a role, jurisdictionally. Yeah, from a jurisdictional role, the, the county is, is technically responsible, but they don't have a good mechanism for doing anything. So, the conversation is, how can we do something from a watershed perspective? One of the, you know, discussion points that Greg would use when we were back in Washington DC is, when the Clean Water Act was first created, 85% of the pollution was from point sources, treatment plants, urban areas. Now, it's flipped completely, and 85% of the pollution's coming from non-point sources up in the watershed, agricultural runoff, contributions, some urban, urban runoff that's not going through a treatment, you know, process. So, part of our target from, as an industry, is how can we, instead of forever investing larger and larger dollars at treatment plants for a less and less return on investment, how can we get some of that money up into the watershed, make some improvements within the, you know, the ecosystem itself there, so it's more resilient and able to handle the loads that are being put on it?
And that's, you know, been a part of our goal, actually, it's in our, written in our vision to, to handle our stormwater, I mean, eventually to the point where there is no polluted water leaving our surface and entering any of the drains, that's, that's our goal.
That was a Clean Water Act goal, too.
Yeah.
About 1985.
And they're failing. So, I mean, how aggressive is the county talking about getting?
We don't know yet. What, the way I'm looking at it, is, well, like I said earlier, for us to be effective moving forward, whether it's this arena or others, it's about partnering, collaboration, and education, and outreach, if we want to make a difference in the watershed. Now, what our role is going to be in the context of a countywide surface water program, I don't know. I see us potentially being kind of a convener and a catalyst, because there's lots of other people that are doing good work, the Watershed Councils, Soil and Water Conservation Districts, NRCS, you know, but how, how can we catalyze or maximize our, the county's role in improving the watershed? I don't, I don't know what that's going to look like exactly. I know that ODA is going to have to, the Oregon Department of Ag is going to have to be involved, and, and again, it's going to be about cooperation and leveraging of efforts.
Can I ask, switching from stormwater back to wastewater, but a different type, is industrial? I've never, and I'm not asking for the Encyclopedia Britannica version, but just like the Cliff Notes version of, what do you do for industrial users? I mean, what kind of pretreatment, what kind of, I mean, are they just, or do you go around and test what they're all releasing and all of that?
Yes, we do, and I think it's every other year, it might be annual, assessment and evaluation of what our significant industrial users are, and we do both monitoring and flow monitoring and water quality monitoring, and we, in some cases, if it's a high-strength waste or particularly nasty, we charge them more. And we have an ongoing compliance and monitoring.
So, you have a team that goes around and sticks things in their pipes and tests them?
We sure do. Yes, we do. What, 3 FTE? Blunt is one, and, you know... We have 3 FTE to travel, and actually, one thing we didn't highlight in your agreement is, we have an agreement that, to the extent someone shows up within the city limits, that's an industrial customer that would meet the qualifications that are our rules, we will, we will take that on from a monitoring, first, as they come in, we'll do an assessment, and there could be some onsite treatment that we'll require, just to make sure that's being addressed, and then we'll have, you know, an engagement as far as they'll have a specific permit. We actually charge them differently than we do everyone else, we don't make an EDU calculation for industrial customers, we do a direct impact to the system charge, that tends to be higher than what you might otherwise see, and then we have the, the program that Greg just described. So, if you have any industrial customers, please let us know. Yeah, one thing that people don't realize is that we're not just regulated under the Clean Water Act for the discharge, but we're regulators as well. I mean, we, we have people under, under permit, we have rules, we have requirements. It bothers me when, especially when regulators, DEQ or EPA, kind of lump us, our industry in with the industrial discharges, because we're not that, we're kind of partners.
And are they, are there businesses that are pretreating, or they just, it just affects how much they pay you to treat what they do?
Yes.
No, they are pretreating.
Yes.
Yeah, there's certain affluents that would actually kill your processes, right?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, and that has happened, which is often a way we go, "Oh, someone's not doing their job." Although, actually, I think the, the biggest problem I can recall actually came from firefighters, where there was like a, there was a fire at a warehouse. It was actually here in Milwaukee, in the industrial area, many years ago, and they put the fire out and then washed all the fire chemicals down the drain into the sewer system, and then a day later, the plant went, "Oh, that's awful." We had a, we had a real challenge.
Interesting.
Wow. Any else have more questions? Well, thank you very much, that was fascinating.
Yeah, thank you.
Obviously, to be continued.
Yeah, and if you can let me know as soon as possible, because, you know, we are going to do, we, we left our advisory committee with a lot of information on SDCs and our rulemaking, as well as budget material stuff. So, the sooner we can get somebody, certainty about who we're going to have on our committee, I'd love to spend some time getting them up to speed so they're ready to go on May 23rd, and...
Is there more materials than, I saw your online...
No, that was it.
Agenda package, okay.
Yes, everything's posted online.
Is there a particular reason you don't want to discuss this tonight?
Well, if there was, we should probably wait until...
Well, if somebody, if there's a volunteer to do it, let's discuss it. But I don't.
Well, we probably shouldn't, I mean, somebody's got to do it, somebody's got to figure that out. Okay.
I guess we didn't impress too much.
I think what would be easiest, if it's okay, we'll draft a staff report, we'll put it on for the, when are you having your meeting?
May 23rd is the next.
So, we'll get it on for the first meeting in May, and it'll outline options, based on conversations that Greg and I have already had about how the agreement reads, and that way you guys can make an appointment based on that information, is that fair?
Okay.
Good.
Sounds like a plan.
As an incentive, we offer...
Cookies?
Cookies, sandwiches, entertaining patter, random jokes on occasion. And West, and West gear.
Haven't got me yet. Unless they're peanut butter.
Yeah, right. We'll have to work on that, peanut butter cookies. Yeah. Now, we do, we do have, encourage our advisory committee members to talk about West and go out in the public, and so, yeah, we, we get them West logoed gear, whether it's a sweatshirt or a rain jacket or whatever.
But I got my, my umbrella just for going to a bridge.
Oh, yeah, umbrellas.
Oh, giveaway umbrellas?
It was a great umbrella.
They're, they're really nice umbrellas.
We have several in our office if anyone needs to borrow.
Well, I would just, I sit, I'm our rep to the Nicky Wick Board, and I would commend you guys for your work with Nicky Wick. John, who was your rep for years, and now Rob, both, you know, they're very good, they're good partners for Nicky Wick, and you guys do good work with them.
Yeah, like I said, there's a lot of great work going on in the, in the watersheds. We, our grant program helps facilitate some of that, and, and I see us, that's the future.
Yeah. I, I would agree with that. When I, when I was the rep on Nicky Wick, I was always impressed by how many more projects they could do in your area than they could do in our area, so it's a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else on the agenda?
No.
All right.
Before we adjourn, council, how did this work? Do you like this as a format? Is this, this worked? Is there anything that you'd like us to ask people to do differently in terms of how we structure these? We've been planning on them being two-hour meetings, we've been choosing, we've chosen singular topics like this, either with our staff or with someone else, more in a, a discussion interaction. Does that work?
I think this is what I always imagined a study session should be like.
Me, too, that's what I thought it were all about.
Thank you so much.
Great work. All right, then we adjourn.
Good job.
I'm going to sit here and eat my chicken.
Yeah, I am, too.